Welcome, everybody, to our second regular scheduled meeting of March 2014. I do call this meeting to order. Normally, we have a youth of the month. We did not have one for this month, so we'll go right to the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would please rise.
(Inaudible)
And we'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you take role for us, too, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczaskey.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Okay, and next, then, we have the consent agenda. Sandy has a couple of handouts that belong in that area.
Under number 6A, number 7, an additional memo from the city administrator clerk Henry Velicker was distributed. Under number 6F, number 4, the library board minutes of the planning committee on March 5th, 2014, and the minutes of a regular meeting on March 11th, 2014, were distributed. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. You have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there any items that council or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, where we would vote on those items in one separate motion? Anybody? If not, then we would take a motion to approve the consent agenda with these additions.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda with those two additions. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under the regular agenda, Sandy, you have a handout also.
Under number 7A, number 1, the 2013 annual report from the police department was distributed.
Okay, and that's the one addition. So again, we'd be looking for an approval, then, of the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the regular agenda with the one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we'll start with the presentation of the 2013 Police Department Annual Report, and Jim Schultz. Thanks, Jim, for coming.
Thank you. Do I need to introduce myself?
Absolutely.
Okay. I am Police Commission Member James Schultz. Good evening, Mayor Smith, and members of the council, Mr. Velicker, Ms. Stibbs, and Wapaka citizens, all. I have been asked by the Police Commission to present the Wapaka Police Department's annual report, and we thank you for the opportunity to do that. An annual report, by definition, is an all-inclusive document with lots and lots of numbers, and thankfully, with Chief Goke involved, there's usually plenty of graphs and tables to explain what all those numbers are for. And I think you have the annual report in front of you. I know the chief would love it if you'd take the time to read it, but in the interest of time and clarity, I'm going to refer only to two of the 12 pages in the report. First, I'd like you to look at the inside front cover. It would be your page 2. City of Wapaka's population right now is a little over 6,000. The total geographic area served by Wapaka PD reaches well beyond our city limits, as you know. That area continues to grow. The actual population served by our police department is four, five times as much as the city of Wapaka. You'll see the expenses for our department are broken down into seven categories. In five of those categories, the police department came in under budget. Only repairs to the building and replacing clerical personnel cost more than we expected. I would point out that this is the sixth year in a row that the Wapaka PD has come in under budget, and this is in spite of the fact that they started last year with a smaller budget than the year before. I would also direct your attention to the inside back cover. That would be page 11. Figures 12 and 13 compare the size of our police department to state and national averages. As you can see pretty clearly, we're very close to the average number of police officers per 1,000 residents in a city of 6,000 people. However, if that were extrapolated to a market that was 15,000, or 20,000, or 25,000, which is closer to the area that the Wapaka PD covers, we would be very much below the average number of officers or employees to serve 1,000 residents. And I point that out only want to remind everyone that our police department is continually called on to do more and do it with less, and so far, they have never let us down. Chief Goke and the staff have dealt responsibly and frequently creatively with shrinking budgets. While our crime rates in the city, you'll see by looking at the report, have not risen to alarming levels, they've not gone down at all either. And you might recall, it was at this exact meeting, one year ago, that we learned from Chief Goke that they had just busted a meth lab only a couple blocks from this building, and a couple of weeks later, there was another one. There are serious crimes, serious problems tried to encroach into the Wapaka community, and all that stands between us and them is them. The Wapaka Police Department's program of community policing encourages our citizens to be actively involved in the safety of the community. As a result, our neighbors are comfortable helping our police keep the bad guys at bay. The challenges for our officers are real, they are ongoing. The service they provide is something for all of us to be proud of. And if you have any questions about this report, I'm sure that Chief Goke and I will do our best to answer them for you. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. Any comments or questions? Chief, anything? Nothing to add to that? Okay. Thanks, Jim. Thank you. This is great. I'm sure we'll take this and analyze it as we can. Appreciate, Jim, you coming tonight. Okay, let's move on, then, to their... On your agenda, you have a presentation by Vicki Taggits Klussman, who is running as a candidate for the Circuit Court Judge Branch 2. She was unable to attend tonight, but she did put a flyer on your desk, just explaining herself to you. So we'll then move on to the public input part of our meeting. Public input is set aside for any individual that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to department announcements and reports, and we'll start over here on the left, as always. Jean Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no new projects, just doing the same, journal entries, check runs, cash receding, and two months into the year, and everything looks great.
Awesome. Thanks, Jean. And next, behind the suitcase there, we have Beg, our librarian.
Yes, as you can see tonight, Mayor, I am traveling with my peeps, because we're having a peeps show exhibit in April, and families can get together and create a peeps diorama using the little marshmallow bunnies and chicks that are in the stores right now. So we're really encouraging families to have fun with this, as an opportunity to have a good time creating something for our exhibit, and there are forms available on our website and inside of our library, so I hope you'll enjoy that exhibit. Right now, we still have the Youth Art Month exhibit, and it'll go through the 5th of April, so maybe you'll come down and see all the great art that they're creating in the schools. Also, our first Thursday film series is on April 3rd. We're going to be watching A Trip to Bountiful, a classic film directed... The viewing directed by Dr. Jack Rhodes. Also, in April, we have something called Money Smart Week. We've never done this before, but it's an opportunity to promote financial literacy in our community, and we're going to be having activities for all ages. We actually have an investor... investment firm coming in, talking about the ABCs of conservative investing. We have another expert who's going to be talking to teens about making that summer job into a million dollars by the time you retire. And we've got some guessing games in all of our storytimes, and after-school programs will be centered around the idea of financial literacy. So look on our website for all of those details. We also have a prom dress swap, so if any of you have any prom dresses that are no longer in use, and you want to give them to the library, and then we'll distribute them to the people who want to come and shop at our free prom dress show. So that's coming up, too. The teens also have a cheesy sci-fi flick that's available for everyone on the 4th Thursday of the month, so if you want to come and watch sci-fi with us and make fun of it at the same time, that's for you. Tomorrow, there's an early dismissal, it's the beginning of the spring break for the kids, and so we're having a movie, The Watsons Go to Birmingham, so you can come and see that at the library, too. Thanks, Mayor.
Be early. I think you're a week early.
Early? On the early dismissal?
Yeah.
Okay. It's next... It's the week after that. Thanks. Yeah. Next Wednesday. I'm glad you said that.
All right. Thank you, Beg. Next, then, we have Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Last week, we had our second session for the Strategic Plan for Economic Development. We did a SWOT analysis with the city council and felt that the results that came from that were... Definitely a lot of data collected that evening, and Mike Colas, along with myself, are currently compiling some of that data and preparing for the next meeting, which will be on April 8th, here at Library Room A and B at 6 o'clock. Starting next month, the Planning Commission, along with my department, will be starting to review and redo the zoning code. We're working with the East Central on that project, and have had a couple meetings to prepare for that, so that'll be a project that... The goal would be by the end of this year, but we'll see how that actually goes with the process. But going to be a similar process to the Strategic Plan, going to work with the Planning Commission on an individual basis, and this is definitely going to be a transparent process and be looking and seeking input from the business community, along with the city council members as well. My department's also working on trying to streamline some more of the processes that we have for applications. Ron has been working on some new forms and manuals for the department. John Lust has also been working on some revised forms. That's all tying into a draft new website that Josh and I, along with one of the interns, have been working on, hoping to finalize that within the next couple of weeks and have that for a draft review for internal employees first, and then moving up the chain. The next Main Street meeting is going to be... is scheduled for next week, March 24th, at 5:30, and that'll be at Farmer State Bank. We're going to be reviewing from session 1 some of the data that we gathered from that meeting, some of the results from the committee, and focusing on some of a... more of what place is, and identifying some other activities moving forward. Last week or two weeks ago, I finished my fourth course in IEDC for my certification. I added that and credit analysis, and definitely got some great information from some state and regional programs for funding for small businesses that we hope to incorporate here. Just two businesses update. Andy Schmidt from Schmidt Boat, Docks, and Lifts is officially open. He opened on Saturday, on Runway Drive, so I invite everybody to go out there and take a look at his products. And Midwest Air Supply is under construction and will hopefully be done early this summer. That's all.
Thanks, Brennan. Next, John Edelbeck.
Well, I've got some good news to report. Your two enterprise funds, your two children, got straight A's this year from the DNR, so... Our wastewater treatment plant had 100 straight A's in their annual report, and we just published the Consumer Confidence Report, which should be in the paper. We publish it for different businesses and that as well, following the DNR requirements, and we have no violations in our water system as well, so... Speaking of water systems, I did put out a report on March 7th that I think every council person did obtain, but it just kind of summarizes some of the issues that our department has been dealing with, and I really commend them for their efforts. The amount of hours that they have put in has been substantial, and I think, on the whole, most property owners are very thankful for our crews out there, but we've thawed over 100 private water services. Some of those are re-thaws, thaws that we've done, that they have frozen again, and we have been billing those out. For the second time, we have to come back out. When we... When a water line is frozen, you can't ever tell if it's on what side of the shut-off valve it is, if it's whether the city's responsibility or the property owner's. So we do provide service to thaw that for the first time. We had a thaw as late as yesterday. We had a property service that froze that we had to help thaw business. We have approximately seven homes that are served by garden hose right now because of our inability to thaw those services. One being the police department, the six-inch main is presently being served by two garden hoses through the fire department. We did have one main break and one private water service that we had problems with this year, so that's been fortunate, those numbers have been down. Obviously, we issued the trickle order. We anticipate that will be weeks to a month out yet to pull that order, so we've committed to sending a postcard to all the property owners or all the water customers to notify them when the trickle order has been ceased. So we think that's going to be the most effective way to do that. We've loaned equipment to Manawa. We have loaned personnel and equipment to the city of Waiwiga to assist them, and we have rented a skid steer loader to help clear out snow from around the fire hydrants around the city a month or two ago because of the extensive use of the skid steer for snow removal purposes by the street department. So again, I want to thank the other departments that have helped as well. You know, street and wastewater is also... have also kicked in when needed to assist, so we're really not out of it yet, but hopefully with the warmer weather, we're getting there. Our water use with the trickle order is up approximately 15%, and we're also seeing that at the wastewater treatment plant, approximately a 15% increase in our wastewater flows, what is the city's portion of that water. So I would have expected it to be higher, to be honest with you, but I hope that everybody does take the trickle order seriously and continues to run their water. So obviously, once we cease the trickle order, we will have to get back into a billing cycle where we go from averaging our bills to then actual billing. We have continued to read meters. We're actually reading this week, so we do know if someone is under... if someone is actually using less water than their previous three-month average, they will eventually get a credit for that, because that will catch up with them, because we still are reading the meters and getting reading data. So if anybody has a question, either in the public or Alderman, Mayor, let, you know, let me know. I'm sure we'll be dealing with circumstances. We've fielded a lot of calls, a lot of questions, people out of town, leaving town, all those types of issues. We have property owners on septic systems that are city water, private septic, and there's a lot of unique circumstances out there, so we'll work through them and be fair to them and to all the customers, so... Okay, moving on, we have had quite a winter as well for snow removal, rain events, ice buildup. You probably have seen the crews out trying to fight frozen storm sewers. After we had some thawing events, they've been out feverishly when the weather was warm to try to open those up before we got cold weather. We had city blocks completely flooded, the roadways underwater. And each time we've had those circumstances, we were able to clean those... clear those storm sewers out of frozen lines or ice prior to the cold snap coming in and refreezing that water. So even today, they're working out in West Fulton on a line that's frozen, so we're still battling that. Again, I want to commend them for their efforts, not just with fighting snowstorms, but with all these frozen situations. We have our annual safety training next week. We were regulated by the Department of Safety and Professional Services, and we'll be training with the city of Waiwiga as well for that. I had mentioned this before, but we'll be working on a renewal of our Channel Lake Sanitary District City of Wapaka wastewater treatment agreement. It's a 20-year-old agreement, and we'll be looking to amend that and probably getting some assistance from most likely Kemfer and Associates. I've already talked to them. We want to modernize the agreement. We need to add some areas that we have concerns with. If any... I know I've talked... reached out to the city attorney and the mayor and Henry. If others have comments or concerns or would like to get involved with that, let me know. Most likely, we'd be looking at a 10-year to 20-year agreement to renew this. The terms allow us just to renew it as is, but I think it's, again, it's time that we look to update that and to address current issues. As of February 28th, which is 16% of the budget year, our street department is at 13%. Our snow and ice budget is at 43% for the year, calendar year. Water division is at 9%, and sewer division is at 6%. So ahead, Mayor.
Thanks, John. But you can't wait for the first day of spring. All right, next, we have Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out by giving some updates on the Swan Park Sled Hill. I have met with our project manager, Dan Sherman, from Beneficial Reuse Management, as well as Nick Pankratz in the past couple of weeks. We do feel that... Nick says that we should be done hauling by the time the road restrictions come on, if that does not happen within the next week or so, which it will be cutting it close. We are in the process of making some changes as far as grading and things, just to make possible future developments, if it were ever to come up, or funding were ever to come up. We want to make sure that we keep those options open, and FALCS is willing to grade, level off some areas for future sites, just in case. So we want to thank FALCS for that at no extra cost. Also, speaking on the Swan Park Sled Hill project, just a reminder, the lighting, paving, seating, basketball courts, all of that will be on schedule and be finished over this summer and into the fall, and that sled hill will be usable next winter. Moving on to soccer fields, I brought this up, I think, at the last couple of meetings. We have drafted a facility maintenance agreement, sent it to a couple high school administrators or school district administrators. I've gotten response from two of the three that we sent it to. They are both in favor of it. I want to thank John Kinnear, who is a park board member, who has wanted to get involved in this as well. And John and I and these three administrators are going to be meeting in the beginning of April to go over that agreement, and hopefully, we can get some kind of permanent setup and permanent contract to have our youth soccer program out there, which is a... which is our first or second largest program on any given year. A lot of benefits to having it there, location, safety, better turf, concessions, bathroom area, I can keep going, but I think you've all heard that before, and I'll get into it once I know that that is a for-sure thing. We also are starting to move here on South Park again. Had a meeting with Barron's, Jeff Barron's, as well as Roger Hanson today. Barron's will begin building with the block. That'll be on Thursday of this week, so we'll get going on that again. The weather is finally starting to come around for us here a little bit, so that'll be good to see that working back. I'm sure a lot of you have driven past Shadow Lake here in the last day and are probably wondering what the heck we have three trees out there for on the ice. It's kind of goofy-looking. We are working with the DNR on a project. It's called a Fish Sticks Project, which, with some of the trees we've removed over this winter and in the South Park project, we've decided to work with the DNR to build fish habitat. By dropping these trees in the lake and those locations, this creates a better habitat for young fish. These aren't fish cribs that fishermen will go in and overfish, because they're basically staging areas for young fish that won't be the target of fishermen. We are working with a couple DNR representatives on Friday, this coming Friday, on anchoring these, and Angie Landsverk will be there from the paper, and we're also working with the Friends of Mire in Shadow Lake. Angie will kind of do a piece to better educate the community on what exactly is going on in case there are questions. As far as the rec goes, we do... are continuing to have leagues Monday through Thursday, whether it be men's basketball, women's volleyball, men's volleyball, coed volleyball. It's pretty much booked the entire time. We do have other gyms being... The other gym is being rented, still with... still with basketball teams, youth basketball teams, and we also are going to have a lot of youth soccer and baseball teams with the weather, the way it is now starting to sign up. You know, I hate to say... On one hand, it's good, because we get more rentals. On the other hand, it's not good, because our fields are going to be a bear to get ready, but that's what you deal with when you live in Wisconsin, I guess. Youth numbers, just on a note, youth numbers from 2013, or I should say, from 2012 to 2013, the youth numbers in all of our programs are up 8.8%, went from 1702 to 1848 for participants. So that's a good thing, and we hope to continue to grow on that. We are looking into adult numbers, so I can report on that, as well as senior, at the next meeting. This past weekend, the rec had its hand in hosting a softball clinic, brought in a coach from Stevens Point who held a softball clinic on Sunday for all of our youth participants. Also, I think we had about 52 girls sign up for that, and then we had about 50 boys and girls sign up for a basketball shooting camp that we held at the middle school. Other programs right now, we're registering for youth baseball, youth softball, gymnastics, baseball clinics, a lot of our summer things, and that goes through March 28th. We'll have a second wave of summer programs that will be coming out in April, so kind of keep your eye out for that. We also had our brochure come out March 12th. Hopefully, a lot of you saw that in the buyer's guide. We also do have 2,000 other copies that we'll be distributing to local businesses and the schools. Summer tournaments are getting... starting to get planned. We've met with all of our groups, baseball, softball, men's softball, and that is in full swing. Also, we will be meeting with the Town of Farmington and Town of Wapaka in their May meetings to report our 2013 numbers and how they... how many participants they had in our programs, and that will be... And we will set up one with the Town of Dayton, too. I'm just... I've got to get in contact with them, so... Otherwise, that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Goke.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks to Jim Schultz for presenting the annual report. Very much appreciated. In addition to what John said, that our water had froze like about six weeks ago, we're also encountering a problem with our water runoff from the roof. If that melts, those drain pipes have all frozen, so that has backed up into our basement. We've encountered some damage to certain rooms downstairs, and we had them cleaned out, and now they froze again. They must be pretty shallow, because it really wasn't very cold the last five days, but they did freeze again, so the melting we had today ended with that water in our basement. The damage is really confined to paint, some carpet damage and some mold, and we'll be reassessing that damage once we're through this winter, and hopefully be taking care of those later in the spring. You can see from my memo, we're still plugging away at a part-time position. Interviews were not successful this round either, and we're going to be picking that up again next round, or next month, with another fresh candidate. We also had an encounter with some AEDs, the Automatic Defibrillators, that our officers carry in our squads. We have five units, and they're all carried in the squad cars. We have five units, and they're all carried in the squad cars for mobile use. We've realized that three of them were basically decertified by our training technician when he was here last month. We've overextended their use. The ones that we use in our squad cars take a lot of abuse because of the motion in the car and the heat and the cold extremities. They're not, they're mobile units, but they're really not designed for those extremes, like the ones you see in buildings, you know, offices and hallways. They have a much longer life. We did not get that great of a lifespan out of them, so we did have to do basically an emergency replacement of these three AEDs, three AEDs out of the six, and we anticipate replacing the other three in the next budget year. And this was done through some maneuvering of budgets, or through our budgeted funds, including some revenue that we had received from the sale of a squad car, which was about twice what we expected. So we're able to get through this year, like I said, by replacing the three AEDs that were decertified. Other than that, the rest is information.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Henry.
Just want to remind everyone that our next council meeting is actually on Wednesday, April 2nd, because of the election. And Sandy and her workers are gearing up for that. Those of you that voted in the primary, we did move it to the new gym. I think that was pretty well received in terms of the location, and I think it works very well for the election workers. This is a fairly arcane administrative comment, but it's worth noting. Every year, our workers' comp program gets evaluated, and we get what's called an experience modification. And it came in at 0.88, and anything under 1.0 is really good. So I think the departments all deserve a lot of credit for taking safety seriously. It does result in some positive effects for, for us and our budgets because, you know, our workers' comps rates will be very competitive this year because of that. So I want to thank all departments, particularly these guys over here, because they're the ones that have most of the propensity for injuries in their daily operations. So thank you, guys, for all that. The broadband grant, about six weeks ago, you authorized us staff to submit this grant. It has been put in. I want to thank Josh for his efforts on that. He led the effort, so thank you, Josh. In the spirit of disclosing roof problems, the former QuickTrip building has had some problems.
What is the address? You know the address of that building?
I think it's 209 West Fulton Street.
Now formerly known as, now known as 209.
Right, Deb?
Yep.
But in all seriousness, we're having some problems. There's been a, you know, an ice dam and some leaking and some damage. We are working with our insurance company to try to get to some, or we have received some funds for that to fix it. Hopefully, we can get it corrected. And finally, we're 16% through the budget, and our area, the budget's unresponsible for, we're at about 14.4%. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Henry. Okay, to go along with the, the next meeting, which is on April 2nd, that is the day after election, I just, I know that Dave is stepping down, and we want to thank him for his service. Dave, you are still responsible for that April 2nd meeting, though, if you would, if you're available to attend that meeting, because the reorganization will not happen until the second meeting in April.
Okay.
All right.
I'll come back for one more.
All right. There you go. Thanks.
She's doing a treat.
Wow, John.
I don't know that I could lose.
Okay, let's move on to new business. We have a license report number 1216. This is a request from the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce for a business after 5 at Neville Motors on April 22nd, 2014. And the time would be from 4:30 till 9:00 PM. And they would be requesting a temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages and wine. Just beverages? Okay.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Hagan and second by Keela in that we approve of license report number 1216. Any discussion? I could say something about test-driving cars or something like that. I won't. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, Henry stole my thunder. The only thing I had to tell you is about the April 2nd meeting. Unless anybody else has anything, we are ready to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Aket, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is April, Wednesday, April 2nd at 6:00 PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at 6:37 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.